We are at 7 o'clock. We are returned to open session. Everybody in place? All right. So at this time, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay.
I think, Don, we're going to have Ben work outside, if that's all right, just to keep our numbers. Right? I'm trying to do our recounting here. Sorry about that, Ben.
All right. At this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? All right. If not, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Dan. So it has been certainly newsworthy school year. And as the board already knows, the community already knows, I did want to just share a brief update and certainly give the board an opportunity to ask questions or make any other comments about our upcoming adaptive pause. We are going to take what is considered an adaptive pause by the Illinois Department of Public Health Guidelines from November 30th until January 4th, with a student return on January 4th. This is really actually our last week then of in-person attendance because next week is already set up as parent teacher conferences for us. So it feels like it doesn't start for a while, but actually Friday will be the last day of in-person student attendance for this period of time. I know we've had a lot of conversations here about specific metrics, what were the decision-making pieces to moving toward this adaptive pause or moving to this adaptive pause. I think people know, obviously, from even just watching the news and listening to our governor, that schools are continuing to be in a position of making local decisions about school instructional plans and programs for students. So certainly, I want to acknowledge that everything we were hearing was that our metrics were sort of moving in a wrong direction, although I don't want to tie our plan specifically to a number. We really felt that, just given the feedback we were getting, in many ways, a lot of it from our own staff, that the importance of a proactive approach, to be preventative, a lot of concerns about post-Thanksgiving and student return after the holiday. Really wanted to support our staff and our families. Also want to just also applaud the effort that we have been in school. We essentially made it a full trimester. I think when we opened up our schools for in-person learning, I know there was initially conversation if we could just get to know the kids and have a couple weeks with them, right? And we know that what we've been able to do in this trimester, and I'm certainly very hopeful about our return in January, is the idea of establishing relationships, establishing work habits with kids, certainly meeting academic needs. But we know that this school year is really about setting up a formula that takes us for the long haul. So again, as much as I know there's a lot of disappointment, I think there's also some relief among staff members to move into this adaptive pause. I think even for some families, there's perhaps a sense of relief with the holidays coming up here. So again, not an easy decision to make, but our decision for now, from that November 30th to January 4th. And I don't know if there were other board questions or comments about that. I'd be happy to add anything more if there are questions.
I would make it, I hope we can look back on the board. The numbers go down, it doesn't make sense. I think I find it interesting, I was talking to somebody yesterday, Europe is basically shut down except for school, which I just, for some reason, just these way we do these, the medical community, all that kind of stuff is just so, it doesn't seem logical, like everything needs to shut down but schools. But I suppose you're getting the majority of the population out from just that general, I don't know, being around each other, whatever you want to call it, willing to dial and stuff like that, that you can prevent it with the safety of the schools or something. But I think this all, I spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people about it, including people at this table, and really going back and forth on it. And I do think the timing of this time of year and family gatherings and stuff, it probably is the right call. I just hope things start going back in the other direction so we can actually get kids back in. I think it's going to be really tough for the kids, the parents, and adapting to it, but it is the right call to do. And I received a lot of supportive feedback from families that didn't want the schools to close, but understood and all that kind of stuff. So there really has been a lot of positive feedback, from what I've heard, just in support of everything that we've done, kind of like you just reiterated. So I just wanted to, I guess, kind of share that from my side too. I'm hearing that from community members as well. Thank you for the staff and everybody that did what they could. Can these get us a couple weeks in?
The next piece on the superintendent's report is just an updated overview of the saliva testing. That's probably the best thing to call it in short term. I know what the board knows exactly what I'm talking about, and that would be the partnership with District 102 that the board agreed to at the last meeting. We were, you know, kind of poised to consider, could we get an after-school program going even this week, knowing that sort of it was a, you know, a difficult decision to sort of, you know, address the pause or take on the saliva screening. And we knew that there were still pieces to learn and helping people sort of build a trust in that system as well. So we are all set to go. The board approved the intergovernmental agreement. The consent forms have been now starting to be distributed. I have picked up the materials myself over at District 102. So we are poised and ready to go. I have shared it in great detail with our staff. I would tell you that the staff, I think, feels very enthusiastic about the process, about the opportunity to be screened regularly for COVID, and also about having our students screened regularly for COVID. So it's not just for themselves, but really for the whole school community. So you'll notice in principal newsletters that are going out, I know I saw Hollywood's go out tonight, that the consent form will be linked for all families. FAQ about the process will be linked for all families. A brief video on what it looks like to do the spit test directly will be shared with all families. As I said, it's been shared with our staff. So we'll be getting that out to all staff and students. And we're collecting consent forms from our staff, and we'll start collecting consent forms from all of our students, with the idea being that we would reopen with saliva testing in place. I did talk to District 102 today and said, you know, is there any way that we could do some kind of a pre-saliva testing? Like I'm thinking January 2nd, 3rd, or something like that. They are not intending to have the lab open on those dates, and so that didn't seem as feasible. What they pointed out to me, that they are doing post-Thanksgiving in District 102, is rather than screening kids and staff before they return, they're doing a double screening that week, the week they're back. So with this idea being that, again, with that surveillance screening process, that you would want to understand in real time exactly what's going on in your school population, obviously remove any staff or students that would be showing to you that they are asymptomatic but have that COVID-like, COVID resembling clinically significant result on this. So that is something that we could do. I know District 102 does not reopen until January 5th, so they don't even anticipate having the lab open on the 4th. So one thing that I am going to consider to contemplate would be, does it make sense for us to delay even our opening for the 5th to mimic their schedule exactly that would include the lab being open? But just wanted to point that out. And again, another area where I'm just, I don't know if the board has questions or comments on that, but again, sort of starting to roll that out. We also, I should add, that for staff that are planning to work in the buildings, we are giving our staff a choice during the adaptive pause. Some of them have asked if they could start to be screened. Talking to 102 today, he said actually that they might like that, to have sort of a very small number of samples start to come in. There's a, as you know, a very kind of grassroots and organic process around capacity building here. So just making sure that there, it would be a much smaller number than I think there would be, obviously, when we're open. But I think there's some value in considering a kind of a slow entry approach with them. So that's the update on saliva testing. I wanted you all in the community to be aware and certainly happy to take any questions that you might have or comment.
I just wanted to follow up on something in the board that we'll discuss about District 102, which is the District 102 is not planning to close after the holidays. And that's exactly because they have this testing program in place. And to me, it seems like, and this will sound, perhaps will sound critical or self-critical, but I do think it's important to say, is that I think we have, we missed an opportunity here. We know that when we started the year, it's going to be a difficult year. We had two goals, I think, we have two goals. One is to keep everyone safe, students and staff. And the other is to continue to educate our kids at a high level. And those two goals are, they're very hard to satisfy both of them when you have a virus that's rampaging in the district. There's really only one lever that you can pull to achieve those two goals when you have a high incidence of the disease in the community. We have already, you know, done all the stuff the Board of Education, the State Board of Education has recommended, you know, in terms of masks and all the rest. So the only lever we had to pull was testing, was routine testing of asymptomatic individuals. And the problem is, is that's obviously very hard to get those tests because they're just, you can't buy them, they're very hard to buy. So we were really very, very fortunate that a neighboring district actually solved that problem. And they offered us to, you know, the ability to sort of piggyback on. And my regret is, is that we didn't seize that opportunity with as much eagerness as we should have. And I'm thinking about District 102. Their board member, Dr. Campbell, made a presentation to their board on August 12th, first time they'd heard about it. On August 24th, their board approved an eight-week pilot program, so 12 days later, to do the testing. And then within two weeks from the 24th of August, until they started their testing programs, they'd set up everything. They set up a lab, they set up all the protocols for doing the barcoding, for collecting the samples, they decided on machines to use. They even had to decide on what kind of assays to use, you know, in that period. So they did a lot, and they got it working. And because they got it working, they've had two consequences. One is they've identified about 35 people so far amongst their students and staff that were asymptomatic but tested positive. So they've taken them out of the pool to reduce the probability of transmission in their schools. And they've also, this also gives them the ability to stay open. And so, you know, I really think this is something that, we can't go back and change the past, but I do think this is something that we should have a lot of introspection about, which is, what didn't we do right? And I think we didn't do right. And what can we do in the future? Not just for the pandemic, but in general. In circumstances where we're making decisions about prioritizing what's important or what's not. I think this is a case where we could have improved safety, and we could have kept the schools open had we done what District 102 did, or at least piggybacked on what they did. So I think it's something that we should think seriously about, even though no one really likes to hear criticism or say, you know, that maybe it's not going great. I do think it's important that we have, you know, we think long and hard about that, because I think we missed an opportunity. And that affects especially our students who are, the younger students for whom Zoom is, you know, Zoom is not adequate for a first grader. Let's just be honest. And it's going to affect the students that are already struggling in school, you know, who need the personal attention that they're not going to get for this three-week period after the holidays. So really, I think we just have to think about that, you know, very carefully in the months ahead. So that's my two cents.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, I haven't been remembering. I'm sorry, I don't know who to say this to David. I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I am grateful for, when I moved in here, I know Mark said we, on the Senate Committee, we didn't talk about Dan's experience with testing. It hasn't made sense. I am grateful we're looking forward, and I am very grateful with you. And I keep performing that technology every day. I kind of just want to go down this whole thing a part of. I am grateful that at least we had a solid technology base that we can afford and we all ready for some of it. And we have great technology available where we can get a remarkable label quickly if we can. I think the most important thing with school is for me, it would be continuing the communication that we have with the families because it's so important and it's there. They know it's happening ahead of time, and that's something I've heard of praying for this year. Because there's others that they, they know what's going on. They know someone or process and what to expect. And it's okay that we're doing different things. So I appreciate the communication that's come out of the parent. And it's not so big, because I asked for a question before. I think it's all about more holistic. You know, I think with therapy, what are we to do after so much activity next year for these students? That was just my two cents. And I am hopeful that it really can move forward and reach those targets, I think.
David, you were going to say something?
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand what, I should say, I appreciate this. But I mean, I guess the thing is, Jeff, to your point, I mean, I don't want to look at this as a missed opportunity because when this was first proposed to us, I know I was one of those who were on the fence, who really wasn't necessarily for this. And so I think this board moved extremely fast to move this, to get this through and get this approved. I mean, the dynamics were also different because this is their, this was something that they took up on their own. And so I don't know what type of legal arrangements they had and how we got that going, but we had to do, I mean, we got an MOU approved, signed, went through legal in like a two-month period. I have to say, for us, that is like record time. And we couldn't move very fast until we had that MOU agreed. And the fact that we're ready to go essentially two weeks ago, and we're ready to like start deploying the test if we were going to be here, like after Thanksgiving, I consider that a huge success. Because I don't see many places moving that fast, especially with the kinds, the constraints that we have to deal with here, having to meet like twice a month and what have you. It's difficult. And so I think we did a great job doing this, getting this going.
Yeah, it's just, I didn't mind me, we couldn't have tested this particularly this, it was due to a dare. They might have been a longer, for their own family event. We'd have been, actually, to do a little check-in for the community, hopefully, for all, if approved, community itself and all the children, it would be useful. And I'm not to my own disappointment, we didn't do that. But, you know, I am proud of our team, really. All we can do is afford, so it is disappointing.
It is disappointing. I think, one thing, though, that should be noted is I think District 105, the other district that's a part of this testing, kind of the triumvirate, as it were, for lack of a better term. I think they've announced they're doing an adaptive pause as well. So I will echo some of David's comments, and I agree. I think, you know, we gave the agreement a proper amount of time and vetting, and the time that we devoted to it, I think, was purposeful and necessary and not wasted. To your, you know, Jeff, I fully hear you. It would be nice if we had the testing regime up and going and circumstances remain that we'd be able to keep open. I'm not sure, even if we had the testing program up and running, as District 105 did, that we'd still be able to stay open.
My sense is it's certainly, you know, and we've talked about sort of the pace of this, and I know that there was mixed opinion. And I think as the virus metrics also increased, there was sort of some greater urgency to move forward. So I also know that part of what District 102 has been developing since August is trust in a system, right? Trust in a system to do this. So they are getting more and more parents to have their children participate, more and more staff willing to participate. So certainly, their timing is really good, that I think they're at about 86% participation right now. But that's not where they started. And whether that was people's sense of the virus not feeling as urgent, or it was truly just like, is this test really what they say it is? Is it really safe for me? Are we really sure that that's all they're doing? That they're destroying my saliva samples? I mean, there were a lot of questions, I know, from their staff and some parents certainly, as they got started. So, you know, I appreciate the comments. I do feel like our team has tried to put, you know, ideas and plans together here really, really quickly. And we still have a few pieces that we just have to still finalize. We'll be meeting with our nurses and our courier. And I'm looking at Jim and Don. You know, our team has been really filling in all the operational pieces, and I appreciate that. So, but I certainly appreciate the comments too, Jeff, and the comments overall from all of you. So thank you for that. On a separate note, un-pandemic related, as we know, we entered into an agreement with the Consortium for Educational Change to do a strategic planning process this year. I know we've kind of gone back and forth a few times if this seems, again, like the best thing to do in the midst of a pandemic, knowing that we have to do it by Zoom. We also will reach out and do more surveying. As a matter of fact, CEC would like to do a, like an environmental scan, they call it. They'd like all board members to participate in that. It would be an online survey tool. They would like all of the district leadership to participate in that and all of the union exec board to participate in that. That would be something you wouldn't be doing on Zoom or through a meeting. You would just be doing it through a tool that would be sent to you, and then you would have a chance to give that feedback. We do have a team. We, the roster is listed there for all of you. I want to thank staff and community members and board members that have said they'd be willing to participate. I do think it's worth entering into this process. Our first orientation day is scheduled for December 15th. I talked to CEC again late last week, and we agreed that if we don't like the feel of it, if we don't feel like we're getting the kind of feedback we need, we could hit pause on that, and we could resume at a time which would likely be, you know, hopefully, next school year, where we're going to be able to gather more physically and in person. But I do think, given our sense that we've really completed the goals of the 2016 to 2021 strategic plan, that it is well worth the effort we've had. The parent feedback we've received is really positive. People who have been invited, asked, or have asked us about participation are eager to get started from what we're hearing. So we just wanted to give you an update on that. And again, if there's any comments or questions about that.
How are the parent community representatives and staff members chosen?
So CEC kind of uses a template. You know, they want you to represent each school. They want you to represent your early childhood program. They want you to represent special education, EL, parents, et cetera. So really, I reached out to principals, I reached out to people that, you know, teachers that are part of EL, are part of special ed, and asked people who they thought would be a parent that would present to us a broad perspective, right? We're certainly not just soliciting parents that will come and tell us that we're doing great and everything's fine, and we've got nothing new to change or grow with. So I think it's, it was kind of a informal nomination process, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, that was one thing that was very, this was critically, we didn't actually have a, I know we had talked about a few of our board members who participate. And, you know, it doesn't, and it hugely, I thought we would have had more conversation in the board about staff. There are, just a second.
All right. The next, the next thing I have, if there aren't other comments about that, would just be the Hollywood project. We'll be continuing to talk about that. I know there's been some questions about that along the way. But next week, I just want to remind everybody that Jim and Ryan Kelly from DLA and I have been invited to attend the Brookfield Village Meeting. I believe it is all going, also, it's going to be by Zoom, a remote meeting to talk about our request for the street parking spaces in front of Hollywood School. So you have that, there is an attachment, just again, a quick overview, and again, just more of a reminder to everybody. And then last, but not least, my other strategic, sorry, my other superintendent's report item is, it is Board Appreciation Month. November is Board Appreciation Month. So certainly let me share and convey my appreciation of all of you. And as is typical, we have our different schools representing their appreciation for all that you do as well. And so I know from Central, you have this poster here. Ames made stepping stones for everybody. Hollywood made something that is in that bag with the tissue paper, and I don't know what it is. That is a surprise. And then Hauser did actually a slide presentation that we're going to watch, and Blythe has a video. So we're going to take about five minutes here. And who has the controls for that? Don?
Before you start, could I just ask a quick question about the Hollywood renderings? Are we going to have a chance to talk about, I don't know if we, is this the final thing? Are we going to talk about this before it becomes final, or?
Ask for the Hollywood?
Yes.
So this is just, just to go ask for that street parking.
Okay.
And so I just really want you to know that I'm talking to the Village Board in Brookfield about the street parking. I think even if we weren't going to proceed with the project, we would still want the street parking because we could then have the flexibility of considering the playground, if not the addition. So I know there have already been questions raised about what Ramesh had come forward and shared was as an estimation of what, you know, the cost might be to build the multipurpose room in the 2021 summer. So as you might recall from the project that we've currently brought to closure, Ames, as we're sitting in this, you know, new room here today, is that the board actually would be about accepting a bid. And I think that's really the real evidence, the real information that you would need to say, like, this is not, you know, in keeping with where our financial projections are, or this is less than, we, we don't know, right? And we're very much speculating. And Ramesh is certainly highly trained in doing that kind of estimating and speculation. But, you know, my sense was, and we do a facilities advisory committee coming up on Monday, this coming Monday, the 30th? We have our next facilities advisory committee, sorry. Where we'll continue to talk about that. But I think my understanding is it's a question of cost potentially. And so that would be...
Well, actually, my particular question is not about that in this context. I was looking at the diagram, and I had a question about the surface of the playground. And are we going to be consistent across schools? I know at Ames, we had to do the engineered wood fiber, which I was kind of in favor of anyway, because it's cheaper and it's affecting environmentally better. Are we going to be consistent across schools? Because see here, it looks like it's, I don't know what it is, but it's just a drawing or what, but it's a very bright blue color, or not. And that's really the content of my question about this. Is that, we're going to talk about that, or?
Yes, we're going to talk. So those decisions haven't been made. This is all, really, this, I asked DLA if they would give me a quick rendering that would point out the street parking spots. So that's really what this is intended to represent. So you can disregard the color of the playground surface because none of that's been determined. We will, what we anticipate is we will reconvene the playground committee. It just, again, it's not so premature, but it's been feeling like, okay, when will we, you know, get to that? I think at our next facilities advisory, we'll take a look at some of the timeline and some considerations, and then we'll certainly be bringing that back to the board. But I know there are, there are questions about where that project should go. And with that, then should we, we'll do the Hauser slideshow.
Remember when we could be around each other?
Yeah. There, I should point out that those are pictures from last year. Again, you can see the ones where the kids have masks on, those are the current photos, but so sweet. So really, truly, the appreciation, I think that, you know, the Hauser one was maybe we needed a musical interlude with that one, but such great words from the kids and I think they had actually studied what school boards do. So, so thank you very much.
Good thing that Kay appeared at the end of the animation and I worried there for a minute.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you so much. And that is the end of the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Martha. Okay, next is the consent agenda. Could the Board Secretary review tonight's consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda includes meetings and previous minutes from October 7, 2020, which was a special meeting, no closed session, the closed session, I'm sorry, closed session minutes from October 7, 2020, same meeting. And regular business meetings, October 21, 2020, no closed session on that one. The personnel report as presented, payables free list as of October 31, 2020, and payables free list as of November 18, 2020.
All right. For West, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Versetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Pfeiber?
Aye.
Mr. Merkel?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Verhae?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Yen?
Aye. All right, next are board member comments. Board member comments this evening.
Did he skip over Riverside Education Council?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, is there anything from Riverside Education?
There is, I have not heard, no comments.
Okay, if not, then we will move to board member comments. Good comment, thank you Linda for catching my mistake. If not, then we will move on to committee reports. First is the Policy Committee.
We have a couple to end, but then I just found out that we have a nice 20 seconds.
I'm sure we'll be talking about that soon.
More policy review this year than I think any other year.
I wonder if this is tied to COVID.
Maybe.
If this is a Sopa pandemic right here.
I guess we're spending too much time inside.
Yeah.
Must be it. All right. Well, and next up is the Facilities Committee.
No, we have a meeting scheduled.
November 30?
November 30, but it mustn't be happening.
Okay. Thanks, Joel. All right, then next is Education Committee. Sherry.
Yes, so in case they missed it, there's been a few more reports from last time that, you know, fairly extensive, it happens every year. I let people know they are reading it from the work time, there's a COVID exception where data might be omitted or missing and that's just because we can do assessments in a normal way that we usually do with break times, so be sure to look at that. But most importantly, the end of the workforce are from areas that we're looking at, areas that we're, whether it be mathematics of how we can avoid staff from rule of learning, how we're going to keep students engaged, how the technology here needs to evolve and just continue growth and we're targeting this. So we're continuing, we've met and still will have Alyssa, who she's working on at the beginning of the year, but that'll be to come. But right now, we are, we are proofing the students during the COVID pandemic for the circumstances and I always do pray the staff and Angela for keeping everyone organized with a curriculum because there are a lot of pieces. It's not perfect, but they're doing an awesome job, I think.
All right. Thanks, Sherry. Next is the Personnel Committee. Goes on, I'm sorry. Okay. And then last is the Finance Committee.
Nothing at this time.
All right. Well, then that takes us on to old business. The first item is an action item for the Press Plus 105 update memo. Let's see, second reading approval, is there a number on this one? Yeah, 10508, I guess is it. So let's see, at this time, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the Press Plus 105 policies? Policy 220, are all these listed? Yes, there's a, this is the one. Yeah. So 710, actually, isn't it?
This is the question.
Yes, so this is, I'm sorry, let me start over. So at this time, is there a motion for the Board to approve the Press Plus Memo 105 Policy 710? And we'll have to answer that question as listed.
Second.
All right. And for discussion, I guess first there's a question that needs to be answered.
Yeah. There is a question, question of...
David, can you speak up a little bit? I can't hear, no one is there.
I think so. There's, there's, we're trying to read the... So essentially what it is, is throughout the policy, it states gender identity, but there's an option that we can change it to, into much greater detail. The default is no. I would suggest that we just keep it with, as the default and not go into sort of the more deep, like the more detailed explanation because my personal opinion is when you start going down and trying to start, like, identifying every possible permutation, you, I don't want to say lock yourself in, but I just think it sometimes gets muddled, it gets muddled and so just keeping it something, like gender identity, I think is, for me, a sufficient, like sufficient term that we should just use in the policy.
Does that substantially change the policy, one of, either one of those?
I'm sorry?
Does, whether we leave it as default or we add in some of the additional wording, clarification, which is basically like seen it is, does it really substantially change the basis of the policy for like supporting?
No, I think it keeps the policy, at least according, at least the way I read it, essentially the same. It's just we're just keeping it more, I don't want to say more. I sometimes think when you just use a very basic term, it can cover a lot more than getting into very like the specifics. Because if you read like what they say, it's like gender identity goes in, replace gender identity with gender, gender identity, whether or not traditionally associated with the student sex assigned at birth, gender expression, it just keeps going on and on. So it's just like, gender identity, I think is clean and succinct and to the point.
Let's see, Sherry, do you have a thought on, say, keeping the default of no or choosing to turn it into yes?
Yeah, I hear what David's saying too. You know, I, I, I don't know, I feel whatever we do, this, this would move in caring and possible. I can't speak for anyone that's not having to go through that, but, you know, for policy, for me, a simple policy is forever, but, you know, I'd like to hear what David's saying too, but I, I do care about what David's saying. Just, since it's anything about the structure, it's all.
Jeff, do you have a thought?
I agree with what David said. I, in fact, I would make a simple statement, in fact, that it's in this about equal educational opportunities, is that what this is about?
710. Say, equal educational and extracurricular opportunities should be available to all students regardless of anything, just basically all students. And I don't see any value in listing 25 different groups because we really mean every student. So I just, it's just that for me, it seems unnecessary and, you know, so I agree with David's initial point.
Wes, I think, I think I heard yours was...
Yeah, no, I'm good with it as long as, I mean, I couldn't tell whether or not, I mean, to me, it just was trying to expand on broadening groups. Probably, I guess, that's probably a good way to do it. Where, really, I'm reading the policy as no discrimination, just period. I think it's a simple, do not discriminate is good enough, but in our legal world today, somebody should be more specific. So that was really my only question, does it really have any kind of implications of which language we choose? And if not, I don't care where the other, as long as it's being followed, we said.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Jeff's statement. It's if we mean all children, we should mean all children. There shouldn't need to be this many expressions of drawing it out. I guess my own experience on the Policy Committee previously, I think we talked about the lawyer over a different policy, but coming down to when you start adding different words in a lot of language, you're exposing the, or potentially exposing the district to liability in the future for if something that's unforeseen in the language you put there. So I think I'm okay with that as well. So I mean, like, pretty much is consensus or unanimous is to leave it at the default. All right, so I'm wondering, do we need to move it a second time to note that we're keeping, keeping it as a default or should we just move forward with the approval vote?
I think we're going to approve it with the, because we had discussed this one before and so it's just that we have left back the clarity of the question.
Okay. Well, so should I make another motion then or?
To approve it with the default, the language that, or is the default language?
All right, all right, sorry. So let me do that then. All right, so at this time, is there a motion to approve Policy 710 with the default language set? So moved.
Second.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Versetti?
Aye.
Mr. Merkel?
Aye.
Mrs. Pfeiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Verhae?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Merkel?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then next is the Memo 104, second reading. This is actually a sub-policy as well, so sub-policy is 7345. So at this time, is there a motion that the Board approve Policy 7345 as presented? So moved.
Second.
All right, is there discussion?
So I should just, this, Don, you probably, Don, I don't mean to put you on the top, but you probably have a better understanding of this policy, but it's dealing with more student privacy and data and so it was a, I know it's tied to the, what's the SOPA, the new policy.
Do you want Don to give kind of updates?
Yeah, yeah, right.
This is something that Don has done a deep study of for a couple of years now, and in fact, Franzik asked him to be their practitioner on their, one of their webinars on this topic. If you have any questions, he's the right person to ask.
Essentially, what the law really is doing is it's, it's really giving parents more rights in terms of what data schools are providing, as well as what the entities that districts are providing data do, are allowed to do with it. In addition, well, there's requirements not only on the service operators that districts may be providing data, um, they're required to enter into data sharing agreements prior to continuing with service. They're also provided, required to provide the district with information pertaining to what exactly they are doing it with the data. I mean, they, they need to agree to abide by the, the laws, what they can do, but also, if they are sharing it with a third party, they have to disclose what third party it's being shared with. As a district, um, you know, there's just some additional overhead in terms of ensuring that data sharing agreements are in place, but not only that, is, um, we will need to have on our website, um, a listing of all the service operators that we have agreements with, copies of the agreements, a listing of all the data that is being shared with those service operators, and if they are using any third parties, a listing of, a detail of who those third parties are, and it needs to be updated twice a year, so, it needs to be updated by January one, and then, June thirty.
So, um, as, as many of you know, my stance on data privacy, I'm all for this policy, so, um...
And it is, it does align with state legislation, I mean, we, it is, it is, it is by law, we need to do this as well.
Right.
And this is, I think, our implementation timeline is July first?
The, it needs to be, it needs to be in place by July one.
Right, so, if, you know, if there was really more discussion, or if this was, you know, I know this is a, a topic of, you know, significant importance, and...
It, it really does...
We have time on this one, but it has sort of followed our process, so, you know, if we want to, we're ready to clean it up, move on, you know?
It, it does, from, I think, from the teacher's perspective, um, there will be a lot of resources, there's a lot of free, free resources, essentially, they wind up going away unless you can get them to agree to a data sharing agreement, which is very difficult, um, if you follow the, if nothing's really free, you know, if we're providing information, chances are, you know, the resources be provided free because they're able to do stuff with the information, so, that's the, I think that's going to be the first hardship, is just the, the resources that end up having to go away.
Any further discussion? We'll be ready to vote. All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Viper?
Hi.
Mr. Merkel?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Berzetti?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, next is New Business. First item listed are draft goals for 2020, 2021.
So, we've talked about this a couple of times, this is just, this is another indicator of our very strange school year, in that we were talking about goals here in mid-November, but these, these are the goals that are really, um, coming from the, the goals that have been developed by our different, you know, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Technology, and Finance, and Facilities, um, some of these just reflect the specific growth from the goals that we had established last year, um, some of them do reflect sort of our, our progress during a COVID pandemic year. I certainly am, like, the idea of having some agreed upon goals that we can share with the community, that can be shared with our staff, um, but, but I know in the normal, more normal times, we would have wanted to be, have much more discussion around this, we would have wanted to have discussion several months ago, um, but again, I don't want to ignore this as having some of these memorialized in, in writing, and make them available on our website and through other communications, but, um, again, the intention would be for there to be a lot of robust conversation around this, and I know this is, that's been a, a challenge this year, but certainly welcome any feedback, thoughts, and ideas on this.
I mean, I think, for this work, given what we're going through, I mean, just a fairly high level of view of even everybody saying, even education moving, which is, I don't know if this hits on, is good, um, in general, probably a normal school year, it's probably a little light on specifics of, like, what exactly is the achievement, um, but I, I think it's going to be really hard to get into some of that stuff this year, um, so just, you know, thinking of some of the things around, you know, implement something, or emphasize, and those, those words are a little broad, um, so, just understanding, I guess, what that point of measure is, just, uh, and then making sure that it just aligns with everything else that's going down, but I think, for the most part, we've, we've been discussing keeping schools open as much as we can, keeping a high quality of learning, and I think we've gotten plenty of feedback that those things were happening, so it's a pretty easy measure there, um, staff has been pretty happy, happy with the safety, all that kind of stuff, but I think for our, um, the facilities improvements are pretty obvious, we've got, you know, this addition is built, things like that, but I think, kind of going, sort of, hopefully, what comes out of some of the strategic plan is a little bit of assistance of, like, building that out, um, because I think it is hard at your level to get too specific, but just having, like, what exactly is that benchmark, and kind of what's the plus, minus on that might, might be a little bit more helpful, but for, for where we're at right now, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with what's in here, my personal opinion.
Yeah, and my understanding from what strategic planning, uh, they will, make those on that level.
Yeah, yeah, more than, yeah, yeah.
Which I think, still, you know...
They had more great on metrics, even, like, metrics that could be updated more regularly. I know, see, some of the great things is that you have some kind of dashboard on your website, that's indicative of progress toward goals, so, I do think this is an area that just the actual process of, of the goals, um, can be improved through our strategic planning process.
Yeah, I, um, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, perfectly, um, under education, you know, it, it doesn't need to be a goal or a specific action, student or teacher action, I know in the presentation last, we felt last month, or earlier, I don't know where we're at, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Dolzlet talked about some, like, possible dips due to remote learning with math, or, uh, keeping an eye on that, like, I think would be important to make sure that we're, you know, monitoring, possible shifts due to the type of teaching, you know, making sure that's not...
Yeah, that's kind of, that's a great example of what I'm moving to, really, that's, you know, that's a big handle, it's all, it depends, to a specific spot, but that, that also goes up to superintendent goal, but, so, what's, what exactly is that measure for your goal?
Yeah, and I, I'm not really sure even how to, like...
Oh, something along, you know, can we identify what the gaps are in, at, at a minimum in this year, we're trying to, our best to identify what those gaps are?
Yeah.
And perhaps, you know, try to make alignment towards closing those gaps in future years?
Yeah, I just think we need to, um, on a district level, make sure we're globally looking at how learning is happening, and where any, you know, any shifts are, are, you know, just to keep an eye on it, because you could already see that the math is kind of, you know, going in a direction we don't like, and it's probably due to the, you know,
I definitely agree, yes.
Emily's phrasing it in a way, unfolding those, those individual people to know, their goals, and then that, that power is phrasing it in a way that kind of triples that in a way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, for me, just make sure we're not ignoring any gaps that are happening.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, I, I, sorry, I, I totally agree with what Linda's saying, I was actually going to say exactly that, but she's absolutely right, and all the thing, pretty serious parent, just, uh, parents they nervous or anxious about existing in the animal, and be ready to identify, please, so we do better, and I, I didn't talk to Angela, too, to go about, you know, we didn't have opportunity here, we have two, two hordes of people that we can generally have with this higher experience, that is, that are all the most, we, we, in our interest to actually study those two experiences in the next six months, to see if, if they had any types of, um, different, and keep them in gaps, or other instructions, and the one thing I really like in this year is the implementation of my students, I think, the clients who really had this upper, because they're on different apps, or applying, I don't know, your type of system to it, or, or in a, like, you know, things, I, I mean, there are a little bit, like, yeah, but that's probably, we definitely could run, and I guess the one place that I might add to the learning would be, actually, it's a transparent of the FCL and traditional learning, which is, can we implement kind of a, all that hands-on, uh, therapy, kind of sensory motor approach to these kids, because they had so much, we, you, and if there are ways that we can implement our natural space and all these things to help them get those gaps out, and any place we can get, so there's movement in their path, and I know they do a little bit, but so far, there's some staying place, I guess, I don't know what you're calling it, or just general kind of occupational therapy in a way, so we could take them the next year to get them back to essentially what our appropriate that we're playing, that really does, we're just, uh, and yes, there are achievements in learning, so that, I don't know what's my call, I love, see that, and people along there, like, love and hope, and emotional health as well, and all that, and all those things, so, I don't know, that makes sense, but that's one thing I'm thinking about.
Okay. Any other comments?
Or how this works, but, um, whether this should be on this, uh, goal or not, but I think the, uh, teacher's contract expires at the end of this year, is that right? Do we need to think, we need to start thinking about that, I suppose, right? I mean, right, what we want to do?
Yeah, and that's not been determined if they, you know, and we have actually looked at the possibility of rolling that, so that, rolling that forward, um, given that this, there's challenges this year to negotiations, and some of that's going to be up to the Riverside Education Council, too, in terms of what their interests are and that, but, um, but you're absolutely right, in normal times, this is, this is the end of a, a contract year, um, like, well, real honestly, we spent a lot of time coming to the agreements that we've come to so far, and working through this unusual year, so, um, whether or not we will negotiate this year or not, really needs to be seen, so.
I think that's, I'm glad I mentioned that, because I didn't realize, single years made everything else seem like to hold, so, thanks for mentioning that. Honestly, I think, um, as we move to a non-COVID time, hopefully, we can go back to having a retreat to discuss this.
Yeah.
I think, though, in the, in the, um, for the time we're in, and the situation, it's hard to have a real deep conversation right now behind masks and when everybody's down the row, so, I think this is, you know, a really good place to start, and if anybody else had other comments, like, before, you know, before we drafted it, we could email, but I just don't know if it's a really conducive place to have, like, a in-depth conversation here, so, I mean, I hope we get to go back to that.
Agreed. But I...
Yeah, but why is it, I'm sorry, everybody can't tell it exactly, I was supposed to give it back.
No, no worries.
I was trying, like, I'm here, maybe we didn't kind of give one or two, or, I think, pretty well, I've got, we've got some things on, I'm sorry, did I, I'm learning, do you still want those written down for review, or, I don't know, that's, or...
Which, I'm sorry, I didn't totally hear that, you, which part written down to?
We, we had four goals, suggestions, or board members, we used to write down one or two areas of issues, do you still want that?
It's not that I wouldn't, it's just that it kind of is a little bit out of line with the process in terms of where we are now, so I guess we're doing that more through discussion if there are, so, what I hear, um, what I hear you saying, and I hear other board members saying, is certainly something that could address this question of learning loss, or how children might need additional supports, planning for additional supports as we even enter into a new school year, hopefully, that can be under more normal times, um, and then also something related to enhanced movement and sensory motor opportunities, I think that can kind of fit with some of the outdoor learning mask breaks, et cetera, so I can certainly build those in, um, this is a new business discussion, so it's a draft, so I, I hear those kind of coming from, kind of, board direction on adding, adding those, and I guess are there others, but I, I don't know that we need to write them down, I know in, in past years, we've done some kind of more hopes and dreams and aspirations for the district, and I think, as Linda said, really looking forward to that opportunity, it's also something I did with the district leadership team, that we just, our summer, as you can imagine, was consumed with, uh, how do we do a return to learn plan, um, so we didn't get, we didn't sort of do that, uh, you know, kind of, open-ended brainstorming and problem solving either, so, again, I, I think, um, as I said, it's important to have these goals, I think we can make those additions, those sound good to me, those make sense, I think those fit with the work that we're doing, and, and, uh, to have them represented in goals certainly makes sense.
Well, since this is...
Yeah, thank you, Linda, especially the mathematics, when we had the presentation, that was, um, really interesting to see the data, so, you added, added for me the, the sensory motor thing, because they're just sitting so long, and why, everybody at home is sitting so long, what can you do for them, so I appreciate those, I think, we've been, thank you.
Joel, do you have something?
I think since this is new business, that all numbers have other changes, or revisions, and just send them to Mark, or, and we can collect them, and send them out, and, uh, for, for, we want that, but, yeah, just, you have people that should, so, I'm trying to, and, I think that we trust you this time.
That, yeah, that's essentially what we said at last meeting, too, was get a, get a draft, and then we can throw suggestions to you, so, just, I think you've got four or five of them, from what I've heard, something like that, so, yeah.
I do wonder, this is going to, I don't know if we've had in the past anything in relation to physical fitness, or, or sporting, you know, sports teams, or anything along those lines, I know that obviously, there's not much of that going on this year.
Right, I don't, I don't recall, it's probably all of the sort of climate culture student experience, and again, these goal areas came right from our strategic plan, and, and they're, you know, the goal areas of, of the world school district, so that they're a good fit, but, um, I think, you know, perhaps there would be some enhancement, or even more goal areas to be considered with the future strategic plan, I think, some of that, just the pillars of will be modified, is my guess, but we could certainly, I know we talked about social, emotional well-being, mental health, um, I think, you know, Sherry, to the point that she mentioned, about like, the, the sensory motor type, type work?
I, I, I agree with you, Dan, but I'm, I'm sort of like, thinking this is just for this school year, and I, I don't know what type of physical fitness we're going to be able to, I mean...
I, I hear you, yeah, I, I almost, again, it almost kind of dovetails into our, our previous discussion of, you know, educational laws, is there something to be said for physical fitness loss?
Well, no, and that, I, I would agree, I mean, I'm not going to disagree with that, but...
Or then also, you know, you know, extra nice students, or school teams, or, you know, there's, there's a lot of things being lost this year.
Right.
Yeah, I think the extracurricular, both regular sports, for sure, you know, I mean,
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I'm hearing, you know, like, they're also a little longer, they're like, a little bit, they're dealing, um, um, in connection to the other students.
Definitely a part of it, sure, it, it's achievement, uh, being a part of a team, uh, again, it's, it's, there, there are limitations on what can be done this year, but again, I'm wondering if, with an, with an eye towards future years on finding a way to recover, I would say, or, I don't know if it's even possible, that just is something that ran across my mind.
Let me think about that, and if you all want to think about that, too, in the next, you know, probably soon, next meeting, and then, you know, I can incorporate some of that, uh, the, the formal input from tonight, and then we'll keep it along the way, so, thank you.
Okay, shall we move on? Okay. Uh, next item under New Business are proposed school fees.
Hi, I included, uh, proposed student fees for next school year, um, using the same method we used the past two years, going back to the base year of 2019, taking those student fees and applying the three years of inflation to it, and then, that's often a, a non-round number, so then, we round it to the nearest five dollars. The only exception is the pre-K tuition, which, um, we rounded up since it was, uh, thirty-one hundred dollars, we... The only exception is the pre-K tuition, which we rounded up since it was $3,100, we went to $3,150. And are there any questions at this point, it's?
So I appreciate your adhering to that.
Any other comments?
No, this is, as Jeff said, this is consistent with what we previously decided, and there's nothing unreasonable about it.
So potentially bring it back to next item next month.
All right.
Jimmy might as well stay there, because.
All right, then the next item, Brookfield Crossing Guard, additional information.
So if you recall, last month, we, we discussed a request from the Village of Brookfield to consider splitting the cost of school crossing guards. And we had some informal anecdotal information, our information is still somewhat anecdotal, but Jim was able to gather more feedback from other districts, I know that he would ask really two key questions. One was, what are other districts doing in terms of shared crossing guard costs? And you had also asked about the other districts that, the other school districts that are in Brookfield, and if we had feedback. I actually think the Landmark did a story on that, so the other two districts are not, have not been asked about making contributions to crossing guards at this time. So, but, but Jim has gathered some good information from your CSBO colleagues about crossing guards, so if there's questions about that, or I'd want Jim to go over that, and you have it all, you all have a kind of user memo?
Yeah, I read that article too, and it was very clearly stated, we were the first and only one that has been asked, so I think, same comment, I think I said at the last meeting, like, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't want to be the only one if there's three or four other districts. So just kind of understanding if, if we're all going to go into it together, then I'm okay with it, and a lot of the stuff that Jim has gathered, I had a feeling that was going to be a pretty common, like, split type thing across the board, which it seems to be for the most part. So I, I guess I'd, I'd like to see the other districts that Brookfield has in their, in their village municipality get asked for it and just get some consensus that we're all going to participate together.
Just get a lot of shaking heads on that, um.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I agree as well, I, I think, yeah, yeah, given, given the information that's listed here, it, it seems like it's not an uncommon arrangement, we do it, we just pay within ourselves with Riverside. But if we are the only one being asked at this time, it seems a little, slightly unfair for us to be asked and no one else. So if it's something that could be brought up amongst others, perhaps not something that would be, we might be more willing to entertain, if that makes sense? Yeah? All right. Jim, you up for the next one too?
Given the headshot, we're going to approve it next month, at the 716, we're going to have a hearing, and, uh, we'll approve it and then deliver it to the ER. But if you, if you, you know, you're doing this, we weren't any changes since last month, and we're looking at all the courses, and, um, and there's something left that we feel we need to change.
Jim, if you could refresh my memory, given the unusual year we're, we're going through now, I know that what the assessments, I think, we're, we're taking a second look at, I don't know if there's anything different in, in this year in terms of this levy, or anything, any kind of different impact, or just anything different at all?
We still don't ask for what we're allowed to ask for, so whether everything is paid at 99% of what's approved, that would remain to be seen. But we still, at this point, this is just what we're going to ask for, so we want to go up by CPI over last year.
Any indication in terms of collection, or that that's essentially not a part of this process, I guess?
Not, not part of this, that'll be when we look at the budget or maybe projections, to see, maybe we discount it a little more as we look forward 10 years.
All right. Any other questions?
No, this is, we've generally been going with CPI plus capturing the additional improvements in the district, this is consistent with previous practice. We know that our costs are exceeding inflation, especially with healthcare, we don't have control over that, but this is, we're being reasonable with this request.
Okay, Jamie, for Sarah, I just had a question about the 2.42% compared to the 2.3 CPI. Uh, I know that in 2019, we got a 1.9, and we asked for 2.53, we feel, I'm sure you do, but we feel that what we're requesting is sufficient for agents to come?
Yes, it, I, we could raise the ask a little higher if we wanted, but it's still, we, this is maximum, this is still maximum, but if we ask for a higher percentage, it's going to end up being the same approval.
I ask this every year, and I know it's, um, it's a catch, but other than talking about agents and our CPI numbers upcoming forward, are students, you're a, you're a, you know, that I know is hard to estimate, but.
It's, it's not cumulative, so. I've looked at a couple of different months and years going on, and it's been up and down, but that doesn't really tell you what December's going to be, and that's the one that will be on this report next year.
Right, I know, I know, I just wish there was a, a way to figure that out, but, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Jim. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment, has there been any public comment come in? Public comment, okay, well, then that brings us to future meeting dates. First one listed, December 2nd, 2020 committee, and the whole meeting 7:00 PM in Ames, and I think we're entertaining potentially.
Yeah, so talking to, and, you know, but certainly want feedback, it's possible we could cancel that meeting. We don't have anything pressing, as I look at, you know, past agendas and things that we couldn't, you know, kind of consolidate. We know we have to approve the tax limit at the regular board meeting of December, you know, there is facilities information to continue to bring back, I think we can do that at a regular meeting in December. Anyway, I, I know that it's, it's complicated, it's not the same thing when we all sit here in masks and far apart where we are kind of straining to listen to each other. And so if, if the board thinks that there's not a great need, I don't see a great need for the December COW meeting from, based on kind of what's going on internally either. Certainly if things are coming up, we could, you know.
That's what handled me, I'd also sort of think that, given the high incidence of COVID in the community, we should probably, I would think we should consider Zoom meetings, as long as school's not in session, because what, what's the point? I mean, there's low risk, but why take any risks, is the point, I guess, so.
No, I, I, I agree with you, Jeff, I guess my, my only question is about the, the cancelling the next meeting, and the first thing, the COW in December, is just talking about the goals. I mean, if we're looking to approve them this year, do you think that's going to be, that we'll have enough discussion at the regular meeting on the 16th, then to? I'm just, I'm throwing that out there, because that's, that's what I'm.
So is there that down there?
More discussion on the goals, would it be valuable to have a meeting to have more time to talk about the goals?
Personally, I'm, I'm okay with them the way they are, if we want to slide another one or two in there, I, for, for this year, I, I don't know, I, I feel like I might be getting too much into it. I think just getting through this year is kind of, for me, like, the primary goal, not, not to have people slide too far back, and hopefully not at all, but, I don't know, I think that's a pretty.
I totally agree, I totally agree, that's good, yeah.
Pretty high.
That's enough, that's enough, we do that, we'll be happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, for me, I, I totally agree with Dave's saying, some of the learning things, I think would be super important about those gaps, and it's one of the things we can do to help them. If that was in place, I think ideal, if, if it's on the 16th, I can't blame the party.
Okay, sounds like we have consensus too.
Well, my, like, I'm sorry, this is a submission, this is a comment, but I, I'm the only one that can tell, we hear Dave's question.
You're sitting right next to each other, why do you think you can tell them?
I mean, I do shout out to Don Flott for sending me out, because I think he's always, but he really does, so thank you.
All right, great, glad to hear that, glad to hear that.
Yeah, thanks, Don.
Definitely thanks, Don, yes.
But then I think, Dan, as you said, the regular board meeting, the December 16th, right?
December 16th, yes, uh.
Will be during the dammit of pause, I think it makes sense that we would meet remotely when our school is on pause. I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree with that as well. Sounds like, is there anyone who wishes to come back here on the 16th?
I think we should, or whatever, sell them to everybody else.
Agree.
Yes. All right, so yeah, so December 16th, 2020, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM, most likely at Zoom, on Zoom, the board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM, if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM. Those are the two that I have listed here, all right, and if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.